Yeah, don't know.
Well, hello.
Evening.
How you doing?
I'm good. You look nice and cool.
I have no plan on getting dressed tonight. What? Yeah, I think this drug thing's done it. You gonna wait for him? Okay, I'm gonna go over to the men's room, I'll be right back.
Dean of the City Council to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Beard.
Here.
Councilmember Broadwater.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Dalton.
Here.
And Mayor Protem Jones is absent.
Okay, we'll have the pledge of allegiance by Councilwoman Nguyen.
Please face that flag and say the pledge with me.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time I'll open oral communications. Peggy Bergen.
Peggy Bergen, thirty-three years, I'm counting, in Garden Grove. Basically, I am here to speak on probably the same issue as most of the people here. The marijuana facility issue. There's just a couple of things I want to say about it. I don't really, I don't know if I'm for or against marijuana, to be quite honest. I've either used it, tried it, and I have no need for the resistance since they say it's effective for us. So I'm not prejudiced really one way or the other. My concern is that reading over the staff report, it said there's an urgency to this issue because we have facilities working, basically speaking, under illegal circumstances. And so it's urgent to make them legal. Well, most other places, other than ours in the city or other cities, if they are working under illegal erosion of what they are, and it's far to be not what they applied to open, they are closed until they are made legal. It's the same way like when I had my renovation put on. We could not leave them alone until the final inspection. Even though I did have two of my children technically sleeping next to the washing machine because of the rearrangement of the rooms while we were getting it built. So I don't quite understand why these facilities are allowed to continue working and being open when they are technically illegal. And then there's another issue we danced through. Now, the end where it says, what is it, the cost to the city financial impact. And it says on. We found that very strange. They've been researching it. They've had police on the scene following and firing these places. That would be a financial impact already. And basically, the whole issue was sent off by Susan O'Leary, who is a long-term employer of the city, and she has a lot of important things that she does. So her turn, the staff, on the scene, or whoever had something to do to make these ordinances to make them legal. So how do you even say it has no financial impact? It already has a financial impact. So, but I really cannot understand how businesses can be running under fictitious reasons. As far as I know, most places, they would be closed. But it's found to be not exactly what it says they've opened. And I always assumed that when you're selling something from a storefront location, you need to have a resale license. And obviously, if these people are not running as a, if they're selling something, they don't have a resale license. Those are my issues. I don't really, it's not the marijuana. It's the way the whole thing's been handled, and I don't know why it's considered an urgency issue. There are being done something that's illegal at this time. According to the state and according to our government. I think they passed a rule in 2008 or 2009 saying that we don't allow them in the city. So, but those are my questions. I'm not running against the issue. It's just how they can keep open. Thank you.
Thank you. Verla Lambert.
I'm Verla Lambert, and I've been here fifty-three years. So, and I live on Marble Place. If we have enough ill folks in Garden Grove to support thirty-plus marijuana shops, maybe it would be a good idea to acquire the Lynch Grove Rehab Hospital and have them all located in one spot. That's in my backyard. I would rather have them there than scattered all over my city. I read the ordinance on the staff report, and I don't pretend to understand it all. With all the restrictions you posed to put on these shops are good, but I didn't see a PS at the end. You know how you intend to, how you intend to monitor on these restrictions. We are already doing more with less in that department. Believe me when I say they will know when you're coming. Just like the illegal fireworks. They know when you're coming, when you drive in. I feel that this drug needs to be dispensed by a qualified medical doctor or pharmacist with license. I know more, I know the more business license that you issue is the more revenue. But you'll have to use that to hire for more help for monitoring them. Volunteers won't work because of liability. Keep in mind how hard we have worked to keep this a drug-free environment. Schools, parks, public buildings. I just spent two weeks in Superior Court in Santa Ana, where on a DUI where marijuana was involved. And that's where I stand on this. I just, if it has to be, we better do it right. I don't want to go back to Santa Ana.
Ashley Brown.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Brown. I am legal counsel for the Greater Orange County Caregivers Alliance. I've been asked to attend this evening's meeting on behalf of the alliance and its members, three of whom are present at this meeting. The director of the Greater Orange County Caregivers Alliance, Steel Smith, is here, as is Reg Laffham and Vincent Cho of C-Three Patient Association, Robert Martinez of Bullseye RX, and Jeff Byrne of the American Collective, all located here in the city of Garden Grove. We are in the process, in many cities throughout Orange County, of establishing dialogue and communication with the city council members and with the mayors, city planners, and people of that nature in order to give them any education and information about what we do and about the medical marijuana industry in general. To give you a little background, the Greater Orange County Caregivers Alliance, or GOC, is the acronym, has a strict accreditation process whereby complete due diligence process is followed, and the member collectives that are wishing to join this trade association must apply for membership and supply GOC with their corporate documentation, tax records to show, showing that they're paying their proper taxes in accordance with state law, both Compassionate Use Act and also SB 420, and paying their sales tax, federal income tax, state taxes. And in the process, or already have completed the process of applying for a business permit within their local cities and municipalities. When and if they have any questions about that, my firm is Lambency Law Group. We're located in Newport Beach. We represent the association and its individual members to the cities and counties at times whenever any question comes up or any legalities of that nature. Because three of the membership is located in Garden Grove, I was asked to attend this meeting just to introduce myself to you folks. And if you have any, if there's any questions you have of the industry itself and of those people that are attempting and are following all the state laws and regulations in addition to the county and city guidelines, ordinances, and regulations, I'd make myself available to you during this meeting or anytime afterwards if you have any questions or would like some information or to create dialogue in order to further our mutual understanding of one another, what the city is looking to achieve and what we are looking to do as well, representing the caregivers and the collective owners. Thank you very much.
Paul Ramirez.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Paul Ramirez. I live and work here in Garden Grove. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Garden Grove Drug-Free Communities Task Force. We're a collaborative group of law enforcement, educators, social services, and other community partners who've come together with one mission: to reduce alcohol and drug abuse by youth. In 2009, we received a federal grant from the Office of National Drug Control Policy, and we've accomplished several goals. We've conducted a comprehensive assessment of substance abuse in Garden Grove. Two, we've educated over one thousand parents from nine high schools, seven middle schools, and three elementary schools in the Garden Grove Unified School District. While importantly, we've engaged the community and built a strong network to fight substance abuse. So why are we here tonight? We're here because marijuana is the most widely abused illegal drug in Garden Grove. We applaud the city of Garden Grove for recognizing the adverse effects arising from the operation of illegal medical marijuana dispensaries, which are detailed in the ordinance on the agenda tonight. We hope that this dispensary registration process is the first step towards stronger regulation and compliance with state law. The Drug-Free Communities Task Force would like to offer support to the city council and the police department and assist both agencies in any way we can. And we invite the public and service clubs and other agencies to our next quarterly meeting on August 3rd at the Boys and Girls Clubs of Garden Grove at 11:00 a.m. Thank you.
Madeline Johnson.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for having me this evening. My name is Madeline Johnson. I am one of the founders of Prop 215. That's why I'm here tonight. Dennis Ferron did not write this, this law for it to be abused by anyone. I would like to clarify the difference between a dispensary and a collective. A dispensary is mainly for people who does not have any medical problems. Secondly, a dispensary does not follow the guidelines of Prop 215 or SB 420, which it took us a long time to sit down and write. And also, Mr. Dennis Ferron, in 1996, and I spent many hours putting this together, going to talk to legislators in Sacramento as well as San Francisco. And the voters of California voted this into law. A collective is a medical marijuana pharmacy that gives medical marijuana according to their recommendations from their doctors in addition to educating patients their rights under the state of California law as well as Prop 215 and SB 420. All employees are trained in a collective by an RD, or nutritionist, or dietary technician, or dietitian. They are also trained to educate that patient about their diseases and how it coincides with the medicine from their MD. Lastly, our collective also educate their patients on their voting rights and how to vote for laws and people who are, who understand and educated themselves on medical marijuana. I have fought the city of Long Beach on these very same issues. Patients do not want a lot of collectives, which they call dispensaries, in their cities. They are sick. Some of them are in bed chairs. They have all type of diseases. Dispensary has no idea how to get that particular strain to a medical marijuana patient by a collective ballot. So I'm asking you tonight, take the word dispensary out and clarify whether you're supporting a dispensary or a collective. Thank you very much.
Paul LaFawn.
My name is Paul LaFawn. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for allowing me to speak. I'm the general manager, or technically owner, of the Unity Collective here in Garden Grove. We've been here for a little over three years now. And I just want to thank the city council for stepping forward and trying to establish some ordinances to regulate us. One of the things I'd just like to bring to the table is, one of the things I'd like to bring to the table is to basically give you my services. If you guys want to see our collective, see how we run, see what we do, and how we help out the community and our patients and everything, I would like to offer that to all the city council, the police department, whichever way you want to go, if that helps you in establishing a good ordinance for the city. Thank you.
Your morning, Blackman.
Good evening. I'm Maureen Blackman. I've lived in the city of Garden Grove for thirty-two years. Kind of new to the whole, the first really, I didn't think Garden Grove had any dispensaries or collectives. And now that I've even heard from a speaker from the audience, I didn't even know there was a difference. But first heard about it in December. And from December until June, it seemed like there was an additional amount of dispensaries from like twenty-seven to fifty-two. I don't, even at the, our annual meeting of the Central Garden Grove Neighborhood Association, the police didn't really have a real clear handle on how many there were. But when I started realizing there, like on every corner, this, that, and the other, it seems like it was getting to be a lot. My husband works at Home Depot in Garden Grove, and he was helping a customer, and the customer was buying all, you know, paraphernalia. And my husband's like, what's all this for? And he said, well, Garden Grove is the easiest city in Orange County to get open a dispensary. And we're like, I'm opening three in the next, I don't know, couple of weeks type of thing. And so I'm really just urging the city to operate not out of fear of a lawsuit, because I know there was a history of things like that recent. I don't know if it was in the judicial system or what. But it seems like we're operating out of fear instead of going out and really kind of getting a handle on the education process and seeing what the regulations are. I know Irvine doesn't have an explosion of them in other cities. And I just really encourage you to take the time to figure out what it is. It's a lot easier to keep the horses in the barn than to try to round them up after they're out. And that's really just all I'd like to say is like, like Verla says, let's try to get it right. I'm not here nor there as far as what they're good for or what they're not for. It's not that I'm against marijuana. It's just, I'd like to really make sure that we know what we're doing in this regard. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay, I'll close oral communications. Any council comments? Okay, seeing none. We'll go to consent items. Move issue.
Second.
Motion second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Four yes votes.
Adams for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, item tonight is to consider a registration process for the existing medical marijuana dispensaries. And Aaron Webb is here to give a staff report on this item.
Mayor Dalton and council members, the two ordinances before you, one on urgency ordinance and one irregular ordinance, are the first step in regulating medical marijuana dispensaries. As you know, the state of California allows through the Compassionate Use Act, approved in 1996, that patients and their primary caregivers who obtain and use marijuana for medical purposes on the recommendation of a physician are not subject to criminal prosecution or sanction. To supplement the Compassionate Use Act, the state enacted in 2003, the Medical Marijuana Program Act. The Program Act allows, but does not require, cities to adopt and to enforce rules and regulations consistent with the Compassionate Use Act. Several California cities and counties have permitted the establishment of medical marijuana dispensaries. According to these communities and the California Police Chiefs Association, medical marijuana dispensaries have resulted in and/or caused an increase in crime and nuisance activities. There are also health concerns about medical marijuana that has not been collectively or personally grown and is, as it is not regulated, inspected, or analyzed for contamination. And while the city council of Garden Grove adopted an ordinance in 2008 that prohibited medical marijuana dispensaries throughout the city, there are such dispensaries operating and advertising in the city. These businesses are often disguised as permitted retail or commercial establishments, and they are operating with no review, no approvals, and no permits. City staff has initiated the preparation of ordinance for the city council's consideration to permit legitimate medical marijuana dispensaries in certain zones and create provisions for permitting them and regulation. And the first step in the process to register is to register existing dispensaries. The ordinances do two important things. First, they establish June 30th, 2011, as the cutoff date on which a dispensary must have been established and operating in the city. This is a critical date because only those dispensaries that have registered and been determined to be an established operation shall be potentially eligible for a future permit to legally operate in the city. And having a date certain discourages the proliferation of unauthorized and unregulated medical marijuana dispensaries while the city develops and considers new regulations. The second is that the two ordinances create the process for the registration of medical marijuana dispensaries. This registration allows the city to identify the current medical marijuana dispensaries. The city manager shall provide notice to the public on the registration application process, and then owners or operators of medical marijuana dispensaries submit registration applications within a certain timeframe and provide credible evidence that their business is an established operation. By registering existing dispensaries and creating a cutoff date to define established operations, the city has begun the process of developing requirements to govern the location and operation of medical marijuana dispensaries. Pending the adoption of city regulations governing medical marijuana, these two ordinances prohibit any person to open, commence operation, or expand or modify operations of a dispensary at any location in the city. Furthermore, the ordinances prohibit any application for or issuance of a business operation tax certificate, building permit, or development-related permit or entitlement for a medical marijuana dispensary. for a medical marijuana dispensary. The two ordinances are identical except for additional findings necessary for the urgency ordinance. We are asking that the council have separate action be taken on the two ordinances. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt the urgency ordinance titled "An Urgency Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, Establishing an Eligibility Cutoff Date and a Registration Process for Potential Eligibility of a Medical Marijuana Dispensary for a Future Permit, Pending Adoption by the City of Regulations Governing the Location and Operation of Medical Marijuana Dispensaries," and introduce and conduct the first reading of the regular ordinance titled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, Establishing an Eligibility Cutoff Date and a Registration Process for Potential Eligibility of a Medical Marijuana Dispensary for a Future Permit, Pending Adoption by the City of Regulations Governing the Location and Operation of Medical Marijuana Dispensaries." That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll undertake a motion.
The first action is for the urgency ordinance.
Correct.
Explain to us what the urgency is. I mean, everybody thinks that we have a urgency because there's a hurry. Well, there is a hurry, but just explain why we call it urgency.
In order for the City Council to have an ordinance go into effect immediately, it needs to be an urgency ordinance, and the urgency involved with this ordinance is preventing the establishment of additional dispensaries pending the development of the specific regulations for zoning and conduct of business. If we do not get this ordinance established immediately, it would defeat part of the purpose of the upcoming regulations, which is to limit the proliferation of additional dispensaries. There's the potential for significant adverse secondary effects from these facilities that comes along with the proliferation, and by enacting the urgency ordinance, that will help address and limit that in the community.
How many dispensaries do we have in our city now?
As of approximately 10 days ago, to the best of the Police Department's knowledge, we have 30 dispensaries operating in Garden Grove, and the strong likelihood of two delivery services also operating in Garden Grove.
Okay. Have we looked at the idea, I mean, I don't really care too much, but what's the difference between collective and dispensary?
Well, it all has to do with how the matter is defined, and we define dispensary because it's a very commonly used term for these kinds of facilities. But we define that as a facility for the, I'm going to reference it here specifically so that I have the language, that involves five or more qualified patients and caregivers who collectively or cooperatively, which is language that comes out of the Compassionate Use Act, cultivate and share physician-recommended medical marijuana. And in order to qualify as a dispensary under our ordinance, the facility is required to comply with the Compassionate Use Act, the Medical Marijuana Program Act, and the 2008 guidelines that the Attorney General has issued in order to regulate these facilities.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Does it require a four-fifths vote for an urgency?
Yes.
Okay, I'll undertake a motion if it's forthcoming.
I'll move the motion. As for the urgency ordinance?
Yes, as for the urgency, ordinance has already been read.
I'll second that. I feel this is needed for our city to have some control on the facilities and to make sure that our childrens and family are protected from illegal activities unless we define these activities, that would be no, unless during what is legal and what is not. And I think it's needed for our police department to have these codes in order for them to carry out their work.
Personally, if I had my druthers, I think that I would try and require every doctor to write the prescriptions, and they'd be filled by pharmacies, but that's not going to happen. So I think we have to work with what we have under these circumstances to attempt to try and control the situation. So I have a motion in a second. Go ahead.
Just some comments to some of the speakers who spoke, Mr. Paul Ramirez on the Drug Free Task Force, those who spoke for it and against it and offered information related to it. I appreciate more information on this, but I just want to clarify one thing, this is the first step in the regulation process. I think it's a needed step and a valuable step. Some of the people who spoke with concerns about it coming in was that bringing it in, there's a proliferation right now going on, and this is the first step to halting that, in my view. So that's why I think it's very important, that's why I support the urgency of this matter. The June 30th is a definitive cutoff date for all those who may have established operation within the city. So with that, I agree with council member Winn. This is needed, it can define it, it can control it, it can regulate it, and I think it's necessary. I think it's a progressive step for our city, and we're moving forward. The law allows it, and so this is our way of controlling that and implementing it. So with that, I'm voting in favor of it.
Let me go, go ahead.
Just a quick comment, I'd just like to commend staff, particularly Chief Rainey and our Community Development Director Susan Emery, for really rolling up their sleeves, spending a heck of a lot of time on this to really get their hands around all sides of this issue and how it works, and I think they did a super job. This is a work in process, but this is a good start in the right direction, very progressive.
Mr. Broadwater.
You know, I agree with you on that. I mean, basically, somebody made the comment that we aren't doing our homework and we don't know what we're doing and that type of thing. There's so much homework put in on this, it's unbelievable. I don't want to vote for it. I'm going to, but I don't want to. I'd like to just dispense with marijuana, period. But I had, you know, a young man that decided he was going to try out marijuana and everything else, and I think it's a disaster, it's just an open door for drugs, certainly young people. I think the state is going crazy on this, and it's uncontrollable. I mean, just like the situation we got into with the confiscation of marijuana, when a fellow was driving down the street, cost us a million and a half dollars, and we had to give him his marijuana back. It makes sense to me, but I'm going to vote for this, and I hope that it does deter the amount of marijuana dispensaries we have. I think we need to get a grip on it, and I do believe that this will all go away very quickly. Philip Morris is somebody who will be dispensing it for everybody soon, so that will dry up all the little, I mean, I guess maybe not, they have the little tobacco stores around when we selling cigarettes, so whatever. But anyway.
There are a few, so maybe that's a prediction of what will happen with this. Again, I just want you to understand, if it were up to me, I'd require a doctor. I would require pharmacies to handle it, and, but again, that's not going to happen, so unfortunately, we have to work in the best, under the best circumstances for the situation, but I assure you that we are going to monitor them, and once everything is in place, believe me, I'm certainly going to expect and require strict enforcement. Okay, I have a motion in a second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
682?
Yes. I'm sorry.
That's the order.
Vote on, yes, 682. So second motion and vote.
Move the issue.
Second.
Motion second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Seven ordinances presented for second reading.
Mr. Mayor, you have the ordinance involving participation in the state of California's Alternative Voluntary Redevelopment Program, and you have an ordinance for second reading, which is an ordinance in the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, electing to comply with and participate in the Alternative Voluntary Redevelopment Program, contained in Part 1.9 of Division 24 of the California Health and Safety Code.
Comments?
Go ahead.
I was just looking at one of the letters that came in on this issue, and it says, "So an election to fill a vacated council seat is too expensive, $280,000 K to $300,000 K." I just, the amount of wisdom in that statement is just unbelievable, none whatsoever. Just, I'm just totally surprised. I mean, redevelopment has been so good to Garden Grove, and we have got through everything, and we ought to just be thankful that we had the $8 million it takes to keep it going. And if it wasn't for redevelopment, we wouldn't have had that money. And it's a necessary evil, if you want to look at it or not, but it's just been a great thing for us. And I just commend the staff for working hard on this. I know you've done everything you can with Sacramento to make this not happen, but it's better than nothing, and I think we ought to go forward with it. I'll certainly move the issue.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion second. Did you want to comment?
Yeah, just a quick comment, there was an old Elton John song that has a line, something about sometimes you just got to rub your neck and write the check and move on. This is one of those cases, I mean, this really sucks that the state is doing this to the cities, and it's a money grab and all that stuff. We're all well aware of what's happening there. The positive effects of redevelopment and everything this city has done positively with redevelopment is huge. We've got too much at stake not to sign back up and join this program, even though it's, we're being kind of forced to do so, so obviously, we're going to.
Certainly a ripoff.
Going to go forward.
I had mentioned at the last council meeting that perhaps the staff, we should look at maybe quarterly or something, showing a video of what the areas looked like before redevelopment and after. I think in a paper it said, I said, "We should look at pictures or something." No, it's not what I said. We have a great video that shows some of the hotels and motels and the problems that we had around there and why they're no longer there. And now they're, they've been replaced by five-star hotels and hotels that were proud to have people come to the city of Garden Grove. And again, if you look at that video, not just pictures, you look at the video, you'd be amazed. And that's what redevelopment can be done and should be done, and how it's done in the right manner. So.
A second thought, I do have that. I disagree that the state is putting their failure onto the city, but just to be on a positive note, it is money going from one government to another government in your district. So I don't agree with the state, but in the long run, the money is there for the people.
Yeah, sometimes just the wrong people. It should be Garden Grove people. Okay, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Ms. Broadwater, matters.
Well, I'm excited that we are getting involved in the redevelopment thing. I just, I just was worried so much that it would all go away. I took a look at a city in New Jersey that was just horrible, and what they needed was a redevelopment agency, and we've done so well with ours. I mean, Harbor Boulevard was nothing but prostitution and drugs, and it's all gone now. I mean, we used to put the Police Department up there to get rid of it, and as soon as the police left, it all came back. The city of Anaheim was delighted that the filthy end of the tourist industry was in Garden Grove. I'm, I just cannot say enough good about it, so I'm glad we did it tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Winn.
Over the weekend, I visited a home with about three or four seniors in the home, and they were invaded and robbed and beaten up, and the older woman had a lot of bruises on her face and dragged from one room to the other. So I just wanted to remind the residents out there to have a neighborhood watch and be careful who you hire into your home to do work, or who you allow to go into your home and observe what's inside or who's inside. And it's really sad that they prey on people who can't defend themselves, older people who don't have the strength to fight back. And it was a very brutal beating. I hope the police department will have some kind of press release on that or community outreach for that matter. On a lighter note, I'm reminding everyone of our free summer concert series. It's every Thursday from 6:30 to 8:30 PM, and it starts July 14, 21st, 28th, August 4th, 11th, and 18th. And we have a lot of different bands that are very famous or, what do you call those bands that replica these other famous bands? But they're fun to watch, and it's a great program for family with children, and it's free, so come and join us.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
No comments, thanks.
Just a couple comments. One, Conscious in the Park, attended the first one, East Gate Park, it was very enjoyable. I saw the mayor there, I think he was singing to you two. That might have been you.
I asked you two, and you didn't answer.
So it's a great series, great event, and I look forward to it. And starting off, related to crime, just this past week, somebody tried to break into one of my neighbor's homes, and they had an alarm system, and the Garden Grove PD was out in full force. They took a report, nothing was stolen, so this is the time, I guess, of year when home burglaries are prevalent, but Garden Grove Police Force is right there. I know my neighbor appreciates that, and I appreciate it in my neighborhood. And National Night Out is August 2nd, so I encourage all citizens to participate in that. That's sort of good news and informational news. Sad news, I know the Garden Grove City Council on occasions adjourns the meeting in memory of Garden Grove residents who passed on. That includes, on a personal matter of sad note, my brother died just recently, this last Friday, and he lived in Garden Grove. And he's a wonderful brother, and I asked the mayor and council to please adjourn the meeting in his memory tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll adjourn this meeting until the next regular meeting, Tuesday, August 9th, 2011, at 5:30 in the council chambers. And again, our.
Bruce Beard was his name. He enjoyed living in the city, and he enjoyed visiting me here. I got to know Garden Grove because of my brother, and he was a wonderful brother, wonderful person, if you knew him. So I just thank you for memorizing him by adding the meeting in his memory tonight. Thank you very much.
Our hearts and our prayers go out to you and your family, Chris. Okay, adjourned.